Legal students and can't take police matters. Dr. Brandon is joining us via Zoom. Hi, Ashley. And we're really happy to welcome Mr. Kristen Gemberling for doing the new executive assistant and board secretary role. And really good to your first sitting at that table board meeting. So I hope it's a fun one. And our first thing tonight is the academic spotlight. So we're doing a companion?
We shall.
All right. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Garrett and Mr. Russell. And the coursework that's involved in the AP Capstone project. Ms. Reber brought this to us a couple of years ago. And we've seasoned our sophomores and now our seniors through the two course sequence. Gentlemen, share with us, please.
We'll be happy to. Absolutely. I mean, first, it's your unfortunate reminder of it's now in the English department. So we're gonna be funny about it. And it's been a fun development, moving from looking from the sophomores to the senior research project now. So absolutely. So hello, everyone. My name is Jamie Garrett. And my name is Tyler Russell. And again, just talking a little bit about the AP Capstone project and where we are right now. So folks, again, I can't speak for anyone else. About five years ago, you know, again, my life is very normal, February, you know, 2020 into March 2020. A certain Friday, things got a little bit weird, a little bit dicey, as some might recall, a little COVID sort of thing. But before that, a student who was not happy about our current situation in regards to class rank and these sorts of things, which again have now metamorphosized into a slightly different thing here at the high school. Again, moving away from valedictorians, salutatorian, moving more into summa cum laude, et cetera, et cetera. But even more so, we wanted to find some ways to give more validation to student work, student effort, student passion. And what we ran into, or certainly what Paula Reber ran into at the time, Mr. Russell as well, was the AP Capstone, AP Capstone program. And in this case, what we have going on, Mr. Russell taking care of AP Seminar in the sophomore year, and myself currently taking care of AP Research. And again, trying to validate student work, trying to find some ways to, again, show the levels of achievement that we have in the Lewisburg area high school, keeping in mind that there's about 27,000 high schools in America, and only about 2,000 offer the AP Capstone program. So again, showing some variation of student work. And in this case, as you can see, if you take AP Sem and AP Research score at least a three or higher on the assigned work, in this case, the college board assigned work, you find yourself with an AP Sem and AP Research certificate. But of course, at Lewisburg area high school, we have a number of students taking many more AP classes. And if they take the AP Sem, AP Research, and up to four AP exams throughout their high school experience, scoring three or higher on those exams, they find themselves with an AP Capstone diploma, which what I found this year, even tossing on your comment app in the other information section that you're a prospective AP Capstone diploma recipient, lends itself to you getting into some pretty high profile schools, which again, not that college is the end all be all, but certainly we want to find ourselves having students moving in the directions they want to into their future endeavors. But to speak about AP Sem, Mr. Russell, please.
No, it's been a slime, Mr. Reber. Yeah, so AP Sem for us has been a 10th grade class. This year, it's in the English department. So for all the students that I have, it's their 10th grade English class. It is a, it's unlike any class I've ever taught or been a part of. It's such a unique learning experience where it is heavily research based and then heavy on writing and public speaking. So they're writing, for me, three long research papers throughout the year, giving three long, then, you know, public presentations in front of the class, sometimes as a group, sometimes totally solo. It is the level that they're, that they have to operate on in the class is just so above and beyond. What I had, honestly, what I anticipated them being able to do, but they have all kind of risen up to that over these last two years. So kind of how it starts, it's a totally unique environment. And then most of the work that they do is sent directly to the college board for part of their AP grade. And so it's a really unique learning environment where we're kind of coaching alongside them. And after the first marking period, we can't even give them individual feedback. We kind of can only give whole class feedback. And so it's a real team based approach for the students, but also for us as the teachers. A lot of it is kind of self, that they get to choose their topics within certain parameters of the college board sets. But that means that they sort of get to follow their curiosity wherever it leads them. They just started their second performance task now, where they take six or seven articles from the college board, and they connect two of them, and then they kind of go off and do their own research. So they'll be working on that for the next few months. It's just such a great environment in terms of both team and individual rigorous work. And I've heard from so many, you know, parents and professors in the area that basically what they're doing by about halfway through the course is kind of what they hope for their freshman students in college to be able to do. So we're really happy with how well it prepares them. And as of this year, we've now had 45 students go through the AP Sem class. Kind of working on, you know, validity of sources, synthesizing sources, you know, being able to connect history to the present day. And the topics that they cover is everything from, you know, ancient history to, you know, current social events. So we're really, you know, I tell them all the time, like, if they're bored, they really only have themselves to blame. Because there's so much freedom in what they're working on. And so so many students have been able to find that unique academic niche and work really rigorously in that. So then from there, they move on to AP Research with Mr. Garrett. Oh, sorry. Yeah, these are just a few of the sample questions the students have been working on this year and last year. Just to give you an idea of, you know, the variety, so, you know, similar tasks, similar projects. And yet some students are taking that in the direction of, you know, the impact of the Vietnam War on, you know, youth political engagement. Other students going on to, you know, censorship and, you know, processed foods. So it's just kind of taking them in a huge variety of different directions. And then, Mr. Reber, do you have one quote from a SEM student? Just kind of reflecting on the really unique atmosphere of the class. And that's really not anything to do with me as the teacher. It's just the totally unique environment where they're working with each other, giving feedback to each other, kind of alongside a teacher the whole time. And then moving on to AP Research.
Thank you so much, Mr. Russell. So again, folks, we take those same ideas, moving a little bit forward, kicking into the stratosphere, as it were, because what we got going on in AP Research is that it's a full year to take care of what many of you who have master's degrees, certainly not the same level as a PhD research project. But in AP Research, the basic idea is that students have a full year to design, plan, and implement their own year long investigation to address something. What is anything out there that you find intriguing in some way, shape, or form? And in this case, certainly SEM has a bit more structure, though again, as Mr. Russell pointed out, even then, structure is a very ambiguous term, especially in regards to AP Research. Simply what we come down to is by the end of the year, in this case, April 30th, by 11:59 PM, Lord willing, we have students submitting an academic paper of four to 5,000 words or about 20 to 25 pages. Certainly, if you're doing a more creative project that is accompanied by a performance exhibit or product, where applicable. And of course, the thing that I bring is a presentation and an oral defense, where students basically have to talk a little bit about what it is they've been doing the whole year and what the end result is. Which again, a very nice way to look at that, that comes straight from college board, Mr. Hoover, if you could. A current student, Adam Davis, framed it in a much better way, I would argue. Every great learning journey starts with a ridiculous idea that you actually commit to. And especially, again, any of you who've been doing some masters or PhD study know that that last part, actually commit to, is the toughest part, where you're kicking around a whole bunch of ideas. And you're like, oh, I'm so interested in so many things. But this thing, again, is taking about seven to eight months. So what do you really want to spend your time doing? And again, ideally, you find those things, which some students have run into, Mr. Hoover. In this case, the beauty, folks, as you can see, a lot of different, in this case, by the way, one of two slides, research questions. A lot of things we have students running into. One of them just updated today, again, that same Adam Davis talking about, how do higher degree Bezier curves help with smoothness of animation? I have no idea what that means. This whole thing, at the end of the day, students are the ones who have to be the experts on their subject or on their area of inquiry. At the end of the day, I can't tell Adam much about what's going on with Bezier curves, because I don't know what those are, but he has to. And be able to justify the choices that he makes in his research. Or we get some other ideas, any of you who read the Standard Journal, and over a month ago, Elsa Fallon talking a little bit about do traditional or new methods of beehive winterization better support beehive populations through the winter. By the way, she's still working that out literally two days. On some of those days that were like five degrees, she was out at our school beehives, measuring temperatures, seeing how the beehive colonies were doing, which more power to her. We love to see it. And of course, other ideas as well, Mr. Hoover. Some things, by the way, we had a particular student over in the auditorium right now, Ray Morgan, who will be Donkey in this year's production of Shrek the Musical, talking about, how do theatrical performances increase the empathetic emotions felt within cast and audience members? For this one, again, we have Ray doing a bit more survey based things to collect your data. And of course, then moving through a process of trying to interpret that data in some way to show how it is that you build empathy by watching the theater. We also have some students who are more literary in nature talking about, why are lotus flowers so dang prevalent in Greek mythology? And again, how are they functioning in this case, literally? Though, on the total other end of the spectrum, we have ideas about, how can game developers effectively balance asymmetrical board games? That particular student had explained asymmetrical board games to me 25 times. And I'm still getting there, but he knows what he's doing, and that's the most important part, I would argue. So again, the beauty of AP Research, folks, is that you have a full year to take a look at some things that you are passionate about, and certainly delve into them as deeply as you possibly can as you make your way out of high school. But again, if you want to talk a little bit about the importance or the value of this program overall, Mr. Hoover.
And yeah, as you know, Mr. Garrett was saying before, we've just seen some great results from our seniors right now. You're saying many of them are already into their first choice colleges, not totally because of AP Research, but we like to think that it is mostly because of Mr. Garrett and I. I didn't teach these students for their 10th grade SEM class, but we're seeing just great results in terms of, you know, these are super high level academic skills. They're engaging with that rigor, with that nuance, with a lot of confidence throughout that time. And there is a lot of research already that's suggesting that students who are graduating with this Capstone diploma are sticking with college more, they're entering college with higher first and second semester GPAs. And so again, we're really happy and just excited by the way that it has prepared them, you know, to launch into the next stage of their academic journey. So from there, yeah, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but.
I'm curious what the most out of the box research question you might have seen from the student.
Besides the curve in the video?
I mean, all of that was, but all of that is explorable within, you know, the context of school, as I was reading it. They're curious if any student has come forward with a, with a question that maybe you were like, hmm, I don't know. That's a great question, but I don't know if that really works for our.
And so I don't have a specific answer. Maybe you have an AP Research answer. One thing that we work on a lot in SEM is that it's a long process of refining that research question. There was a team last year that was, and I'm not going to remember all the details of it, but they were really, they wanted to look into the aspects of mental health in, I think, parent involvement in youth soccer. And so it was so many, and these were all athletes, so like you knew this was coming from a personal place. And it was so specific on like three different levels. And as soon as they got down there, they went, huh, there's no research, there's no materials. And so especially in SEM, sometimes when they start with those outside the box things, they gradually have to either zoom in a little bit more or pull back. There was one student, she moved away in the middle of this year. And I don't remember what it was, but she was looking at the political repercussions in a specific rural area in the Midwest of a cult that was there. And she didn't start that out of the box, but she got that out of the box because she wanted to look at, you know, the religious and political implications of all these things. And she finally went, I can study this one area. And so sometimes they start out of the box and they get somewhere useful. And sometimes they do end up in these very specific weird places, because that's where they can find, you know, material or research. I don't know if there's anyone who started outside of the box for you?
I would say, I mean, hard to say outside the box, more so, again, just like thinking broadly versus thinking like, hmm, how's this going to work? So in that former example, thinking too broadly, had a student who she's now revised her question much more, but the initial idea was just, climate change. And that was it. It was like, yo, I'm intrigued by climate change. I'm like, dog, me too. I'd love to know what your perspective is. So again, that one took some more, you know, asking some probing questions, seeing like what was the genuine thing that we're trying to delve into. In this case, that student went along the track of thinking a little bit about how, basically how parents discuss, you know, environmental issues. How does that lead to children's awareness of and concern about climate change? And another one that was particularly interesting this year was a student who was thinking about rural healthcare. And initially, the way that he was thinking about building into that was by having conversations with folks from the local area, you know, whatever, however you term, central Pennsylvania, again, still an amorphous idea. But folks from central Pennsylvania who don't have a lot of money, don't have a lot of health insurance, if at all, and are seeking medical care, just tell me about that process. And it was like, you know, I'm sure that's, that is, again, very interesting. But how do we kind of turn that into a thing that you can, you actually do on the ground? Where again, you know, having a high school kid email you like, hey, tell me about your healthcare experiences is an odd thing to consider. So again, think about how to frame those words, five years. Yeah, again, you're starting very broadly, or starting in an area where it's like, homie, I'm not sure where you're going to go with it, but I would love to help you along the way.
Yeah, thank you. Can I ask about the, your process of teaching them the skill set of working on something with such a long timeframe like that, right? A lot of grad students struggle, because yes, there's like a whole year to get something done. And then like you're in the last month and you're going crazy. So what are the kind of milestones or goals that you have for them along the way? And how are you teaching them without that skill?
SEM's a great spot for that, because I think we've both seen the hardest thing about this is working on a project for a long time and using that time well. And the students know that that's the hardest part of this process. So I'm picking up SEM, Lauren Peck, and Kelly Beal taught it for the first year, three years ago. And then I co-taught it with Kelly last year. And one thing that we started doing is, once they start their official work for the college board, we can no longer give them individual feedback. So we have them do a fast forwarded version of it for the first marking period, where we're walking them through every step of the way, and we're kind of saying, this question's not going to get you anywhere. Here's what you can do better on your paper. Here's how your presentation can be improved. So we go through it in a pretty intense way, you know, handholding them, so that they get a mock version of all of that. That helps a lot, because then by the time October rolls around, usually they're off and running. And then we can kind of gently remind them of what they did before. Remember how stressed you were when you didn't use your time well, so on and so forth.
Similar to what I was pointing out, but in this case, again, SEM, a good place to think about structuring. I would argue AP Research, terrible place to think about structuring, because again, like the things that you owe to college board, should you choose, everything's graded by college board graders. Again, first day of school this year was August 22nd. Literally, nothing is fundamentally due until April 30th at 11:59 PM, in this case. Which again, so like finding those milestones along the way, those points where it's like, hey, you need to give me some things. Along the way has been really intriguing. For example, literally just this week on Tuesday, the first part, the first third of students' academic papers was due to me by 2:41 PM on Tuesday, which by 2:39, I had some kids who were like, listen, Mr. Garrett, it's probably not going to be 2:41. How about like 3:10, that sort of thing? And I'm like, yo, duh, sure, that's, that's fine, you know? So again, thinking about those sorts of ideas, finding some ways to understand like, yeah, yeah, sure. Like you need to be on some sort of budgeting of time, but how we negotiate that, we still have a little bit of wiggle room. So again, at the end of the day, they're still both very skills based classes. And one of the biggest skills being time management, which again, can't speak for anyone else in the room. I love procrastinating. It feels so good in the moment, but you know that it's not, again, the ideal way to get things done. So trying to communicate, as Mr. Russell pointed out, all those sorts of ideas to students beyond just this particular place, moving into the rest of their lives as well. Don't put things off. It ain't going to work.
Any other questions? Wish this existed when I was a kid. Sounds awesome. Thank you.
Happy to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is citizens' comments to the board on agenda items, if we have any. We've never had guests. Where are you from? What class?
School, family, and community.
Oh, all right. Sounds good. Welcome. Board representatives' comments, who, we don't make anyone stay the whole. We'll start over here. Who would like to take it off? Eric just?
Was it, yeah, oh, God. I told her ahead of time, like, sometimes they hold an order, but I'll jump in in case. I don't want to do that to get impersonating. Super excited to just have Kaylee here, have her a week in here, a week with a snow day mixed in there. Just excited to have her share more. She'll share a little bit more about just her experiences so far. We're very excited to have her on board, as we're working into a lot of things. And one of the things that we started, and she helped with immediately, is just kindergarten registration opening up for next school year. So we do have that open. We posted that to our Facebook pages, reaching out to newspapers, and now also reaching out to local preschools, already looking ahead to the class of 2038, which is kind of terrifying to think about, that's what they will be. But excited just to welcome the newest, newest group of green dragons on board. And I think each year, we learn from what we did previously. And we're really leaning into the teachers and involving them more, and encouraging them to give us ideas just to make this a special event for the kids. We don't want it to just be, let's go in, stranger's going to ask me questions, and then I'm going to leave with a couple bracelets that show I went to the stations. And I feel like everyone's really buying into that process and brainstorming creative ways that we can just make it a bigger event. So very excited that that process is underway, and we've already had probably about a dozen people register already. So excited for that. Also, last week, we started some activities for Black History Month. We had Susquehanna University reached out. We're just very appreciative of those opportunities that we have. We're in a very fortunate community where we have chances to connect with universities. So Susquehanna University reached out, their Black Student Union came. They read books to second grade, and then they came and did a presentation to third grade. That's the first they've come and done a presentation for third grade. It was very well received. Our kids loved it. And it's just great forming those connections with Susquehanna. Bucknell will be coming in a week. They come in, they have guest readers. And that's something we've done a couple of years. Bucky DeBice will be coming in for a photo op with the kids. Just another great opportunity, just for our kids to connect with people they look up to, people they may see in the community. Bucknell, a lot of them are athletes, so our kids may have seen them on the different athletic fields. They love getting pictures with the kids and then even just asking them questions. So just very fortunate and thankful for those opportunities to bring in different groups and give our kids those experiences. Then the last thing I wanted to share, we also are participating in the design and ad contest with the Standard Journal again. This year, they're shifting from third grade to fifth grade. So the fifth graders have had this experience in third grade. It's kind of a refresher for them. And it, it feels like it makes a little more sense. They have a greater awareness of designing an actual ad. It fits nicely into Mr. Snyder's art lessons right now, the unit that he's doing. And I think the spelling will be a little better in the ads, which is always nice. They're so proud of it, third grade, and you love their work. Be like, oh darn, I wish I could have just helped you there, like. But it's a fun thing. It's a great thing, again, to be a part of the community. And several school districts do it. They'll publish the different ads, and then businesses can actually pay to use those ads in their advertising and marketing. So excited that just, they just came in today, kicked that off for fifth grade. We have a couple of weeks for students to work on designs, and then we'll submit them to the chairman.
Good job. Turn it over. This is good.
So I spent my five days so far, not just shadowing along with Eric and attending meetings by getting into classrooms and trying to establish relationships with the kids and the teachers, and just to kind of see, you know, the atmosphere at the whole school and the classrooms. And I love the fact that going from Kelly to Lindtown, there still seems to be this same atmosphere of kindness and respect and responsibility in the classrooms. And, you know, there's our kindness week theme. But even prior to going over to Lindtown today and seeing the performance that Evelyn and a group of fifth graders put on for the school, I was able to see the classrooms at Kelly, going in, even kindergarten classrooms. I would be having a conversation with the teachers, and the entire time we're discussing something, and it was curriculum and letters and how they were using it in their room. And the kids are just doing exactly the routine that they're supposed to be doing. And they, I mean, one conversation went on quite lengthy, and I thought, these guys are going to start crawling on each other, you know? And they didn't, and they waited patiently, and they were, you know, someone had an issue, and somebody else was like, it's okay. And they go help. And like, it just was very refreshing to see that that seemed to be something that was traveling right up into Lindtown. And the kindness get today, even the kids got the whole audience involved. And by the end, everybody was up surfing and pretending they were like part of it. And it was really awesome to see that community. And the other thing that I've noticed is there's a lot of support. And you all probably already know this, but you know, everyone seems to be so willing to come together, staff, administration counselors, to solve problems together and try to find solutions. And I'm really excited to be a part of it. So some great things going on.
Well, thank you. And you're wondering what age they've stopped enjoying plays and surfing. It's seventh grade. Sixth grader's tilted into it. So some highlights from the middle school, we, this year, one of the areas of focus for our school improvement team, which is just looking at big picture, what do we want to dig into as a group, was looking at our advisory program. So we started with second step is our curriculum about seven years ago, it was in my third year of middle school. And we've been using it ever since. And it's evolved over time in terms of how much time we have to dedicate to our advisory programming, but also just how we go about delivering that experience to the students. So I felt like it was time to take a look at where are we, how do staff feel, and how do students feel? So our school improvement team, together, a staff survey, we got some really valuable input from the staff. And it was time for our student input. So with our emphasis on student voice and push for student forums, we felt this would be a perfect opportunity, and it fits really well with the we belong part of our mission statement, to pull together a small group of students. So on Friday, we had about six to eight students from each grade level, so roughly 20 students in total, and had a series of questions just focused on our advisory programming and structure for the students. We split them up by grade level, just because the experience for a sixth grader who's halfway through their middle school career, or their first year of their middle school career, and an eighth grader who's closer to being a high schooler, not a middle schooler, is very different. So it was Mr. Solrick, Mr. Mallory, and myself, each took a group, and asked the questions of the students, and of course, gave them, this is your opportunity. You can be completely honest. If you don't like it, you're allowed to say it and not be in trouble. And it was really awesome to see the students open up and share some really, really valuable takeaways that I'll be able to take back to our team now, and then compare that with our staff input to see where are there some similar themes, where is there maybe some difference, and dig into why is that? But it was really reassuring to know that even seven years later, our students overall still find that time valuable, feel it strengthens their connections with one another, because it's their homeroom group, that's their advisory group. The students value group discussion, service learning. And I think that just says a lot about the emphasis on those things in our, our school district and community. The other highlight was on Wednesday, we had our Valentine's breakfast. So one of our big rewards for our schoolwide positive behavior support program is the Valentine's breakfast. We had 30 winners, which anyone who earned one of our RAPs points, and RAPs are schoolwide expectations of respectful, accountable, prepared, and safe. Anyone who earned a point in February was, each point was like a chance to win. And all 30 winners got to bring a Valentine or a friend, can't call them Valentines because they're middle. Can't call them Valentines because they're middle schoolers. So we got to bring a friend, um, and the seventh grade teacher served up a delicious breakfast. And I would say the sixth graders were the most excited. They didn't know anything like that happened. Seventh and eighth graders still enjoyed it even though they they don't wanna act like they do. Um, but it was, it was really great to see the kids just enjoying that, um, that structured downtime, but again, recognizing the good our students do, um, with our new program that we're using for our, um, positive behavior support system. We've had over thirty thousand wraps points given to students this year for meeting exceeding our expectations. We know the value of positive reinforcements. That just shows over thirty thousand times that students have been reinforced through this program. Um, it's evidence of the hard work that students do and the attention of our staff to catch our students doing the right thing and doing the good things. It's a busy month ahead. We have our, um, eighth grade visit to the high school coming in early March and a school assembly short after and a good long stretch of learning here as we head into the spring.
Um, so here at the high school, last week we had a signing day. Um, Mr. Wetzel put wet senior put together, um, a signing day for for a lot of our student athletes. Um, it was the first time we've ever done it. Uh, it went fairly well, um, but there were certainly areas where we'd like to to highlight those accomplishments, um, and jazz it up a little bit, uh, make it really memorable. Parents were able to come out and have their pictures taken with their students. So it was a very cool event, um, and certainly something we're gonna continue to look at in the future. Um, as we enter the spring, it is scheduling season is quickly descending upon us. The course selection sheets and curriculum guide are apparently in revision. I don't have a date for when those are gonna be out. Um, but we're in the process of planning those class meetings to go over those changes with students, uh, so they know what to look for, what to expect, um. And like Mr. Sculp said, we are also working together to plan a middle school trip up here for those rising ninth graders. Um, they'll get to tour, eat lunch in the cafeteria. Also hear about what course offerings will be available available for them as rising ninth graders. Uh, and in the same evening, uh, we'll have a meeting with parents as well. Um, I have, as the school counselor has sent home countless course, uh, selection sheets, uh, and gotten less than countless back. Um, so having parents involved in that process is critical for a number of reasons, not least of which is it's nice to know what kids wanna take in a timely fashion. Um, and last week, I just happened to notice on the calendar, there was an awful lot of choir stuff going on. Uh, and talking to Mr. Walls, they, he took, uh, seventeen students to pre-auditions for four, uh, for old things, for old events. Of those seventeen, thirteen moved on to districts and of those thirteen, nine advanced originals. Uh, that festival will be here at the high school in March, I believe. Um, and at that point, those students get to, uh, audition to go on to state. So absolutely definitely wanna point out those, uh, those accomplishments as well.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is our our first item for board action, which is old business, the, um, operating budget for some tech. Do you write your motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Kraus.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lyons. Moved by Ms. Kraus. Second by Ms. Lyons. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yeah.
Your heat?
Yes.
Dr. Javon?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yeah.
Dr. Matt?
Yes.
Our next item is new business and MOU is our teacher contract for the compensatory position.
I'll give you a bit of background here. We utilize game managers, um, a person paid to facilitate our athletic con- contests. And it came to the attention of us, uh, upon request that track has not paid their person who works diligently to secure a lot of event timers and scorers. And this same individual runs the scoring station and all that's involved when you are the home um, team for a track meet. So working back through the association, it remedies that with this track, um, meet um, individual who will then be paid similarly meet manager like our other, um, individuals who are, uh, employed this way. So I ask that we move this forward uh, for the individual to receive the compensation. And it took adding that to the teacher's contract to be able to make that possible.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Kraus.
Second.
Second by Dr. Mattis. Any discussion? We're gonna throw one.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Our next item is the consultant agreement for the executive assistant onboarding and training and so forth. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion at the recommended ring?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Mattis. Motion at the recommended ring. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Graham. Any discussion?
Dr. Graham?
Oh, is that me? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yep.
And I will only add that we're so thankful that Mrs. Young is hand in hand with Mrs. Gemberling, uh, helping Kristen to transition into.
Very thank us. Very thank you.
All right. Most exciting thing in February is the calendar for next year. So.
Presented to you simply for information and you can take a look at it. We'll continue to review it. We've had our administrators review it. We've shared, uh, it, uh, across uh, for everyone to kind of count days and see where, uh, the holidays and breaks are as well as the state testing, uh, and all those other pieces that go into a school year. It is built on one hundred and eighty days of instruction and one hundred and eighty-seven for our, um, contracted workers as well. So take a look. We'll bring it back for approval at the next board meeting.
Can I ask you a question? What are the variables that? I mean, obviously holidays are changeable, but we know those in advance. What are the variables that?
Great question. How soon in August do you want to begin? How late in May to June do you want to continue? How much time holidays fall on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? Should you start the week and have some days or extend the holiday through the entirety? Knowing that many families plan and travel around our designated, uh, calendar days, which is why it's the most anticipated, um, piece of news to come out. But that's where you're balancing that from internally. I would tell you staff look at when is it so long since there's been a break that staff as well as students need some time away from the structure and the, uh, school, uh, routines. So a little bit goes into it. One additional piece for us is to more or less keep the five sending districts to stun somewhat in step because it's our calendars that determines their operating calendar as well. So there's a little bit of finessing to it when you sit down to consider those pieces.
What what prevents us from planning further out?
And service days have been a thing that changes around. Like depending on, like, cause they, I just what I've noticed being on the board, like, depending on elections and stuff, we've moved in service days and things and because of the elections at the middle school.
But we know that. I mean, we we know all of that. There's, I I I guess my my, that's really mine. And and it's not actually my question. Let let me be honest. I have no, I have no care in the world when we do this calendar. But I get a lot of questions from people who, um, have to set their schedules like my wife, I suppose, a year in advance. So she's now picking vacation for twenty twenty-seven. Right? So, um, and she's like, well, we don't know when the school is. Well, we kind of have an idea for when the school's gonna, I mean, it's sort of the same every year. But so my question really is just, is there anything that prevents us from looking at this further out or would that be an undue burden on the district?
I mean, a lot of places that, I mean, I'm not a school district, but other types of entities planning your zone. I had a different question. Take y'all's, uh, hint for that one. We'll look into it.
One of the things I would think is the P S S A testing, right? That's determined by the state and you wanna make sure that, but again, I mean, it's traditionally at the same time every year that you could plan around, but that's something that we we can't until a state gives those dates.
Two years.
Two years ahead. Okay.
That's good. We've also shifted some professional development days for our, um, you know, seven additional days for um, our con- contracted employees. So again, I don't know how, uh, we've only done it a handful of times, so maybe it's not a big deal.
In front, three days in front. How can we distribute those? But it is an interesting question. Thank you.
It's all important now. The the different question was about flexible instruction days and when we choose to use them or when it allows us to not we use a snow day, I mean, a makeup day.
There really is discretion. Flexible instructional days have to be applied for. We are currently in the second year of the two-year application that we last submitted. It is an option for when we have inclement weather. There is also newer legislation that allows us to track instructional hours rather than the number of days. And it's nine ninety for secondary and nine hundred for elementary. And that allows districts to now have the discretion to make the day up or not make the day up from the one eighty. But our teacher contract of one eighty-seven obligates their service and not only is weather unpredictable, but again, making those decisions as to what's the best way to preserve continuity of instruction, marking periods, grading processes and those pieces that are so built in. Whether or not we can deliver quality, flexible instruction with virtual learning. We're not big fans of that in the district. Not all our students have access at home. Not all have supervision at home. There are so many more factors of consideration. But we're due to either apply again for big days or forego them and say they won't be an option for us. I sat with superintendents Wednesday at the IU. Seventeen districts roughly split on use them, don't use them. Keep them in reserve as another option, maybe, but those are all the pieces that go into that.
We get to decide now if we're applying again for the next.
We would apply in June. We're two years forward. Could elect to use or not use. Currently, the legislation allows five days to be utilized that way.
And the hour change is what allowed us this year to not make up our first.
Correct.
Is, are we doing the calendar later this year than we normally do?
Yeah, be wary.
Okay. I was just wondering. I've seen a lot like online, apparently, of people have been anxious lately. And that's why I was wondering. I don't, I never saw it before, but it was like so many posts of people like, do we know when the ca- I don't live in that calendar, so.
I encourage the public to contact Justin.
Yeah, yeah.
I I did it too, to be fair, and I I I'm gonna echo everything that Justin said. I'm not, I'm not playing like ten years in a row, but if there'd be possibility to do two or three years at a, at a government, I think a lot of people happy.
Kathy, the, um, professional development that we did with the IU, um, I mean, my only concern, I'm not, certainly not against that. Um, is there any any concern that something like that might arise next year with the IU and if we have our, you know, our contracted days set? I mean, can can we still? I'm just thinking from a logistics standpoint, do we have to then go back to the association to reopen? I mean, how does that work if we shift the days? If we we set our calendars, say what we're having in service days, for example, or a professional development days? Can we easily change them?
They are changeable. We would work to, uh, come to a common understanding. Um, again, we have virtual learning possibilities for them. We have opportunities to schedule them flexibly to be done within a contractual year. There are probably a number of things that could be considered.
Cause that was an IU wide and so not every school district in the IU started on the same days, but I just wanna make sure we're not tying our hands in the future to.
There have been years, it doesn't happen every year, but there have been years when we've had to vote to change the schedule mid-year and per, and I can't even tell you what the reasons were there.
Mother nature, weather.
Yeah.
Certainly that would make people that had made plans two years ago unhappy, no doubt.
That that would be my, and honestly, like, I don't have a strong, uh, strong argument, but for either side, but my thing would be in in the same response of generally what changes for the public planning, generally what changes. Like, we know that we are generally starting the third, third day. Like, I like, people know enough, I would say, to plan vacations. And I think that then when we change it, we're gonna make people mad. And so instead of kind of taking that on, uh, that would be my only argument is like, there's always gonna be, it's not, you know, we do it two years out and then we change it and then somebody's mad that we changed the calendar because they planned their camp, their vacation around it and it does generally not change. So you can usually know when we're gonna start, when we're gonna stop all of those things.
Preaching requires.
Yeah. That would, that would be my only thing with it is.
But it has been a complaint for decades.
Yeah, yeah. This is the, it feels like we're talking about a shed right now. Unless we've never talked about the calendar.
And graduation, we're trying to have the same date. That's one that people like to know.
Yeah.
Because they wanna be able to invite.
True.
And bring people from afar, but I feel like we've kind of settled on a day and Bucknell usually accommodates it.
And again, that's a process of going and finding out what's available to us, lining up our end date. If you did look with some detail, this was built with the awareness that there is a general idea that we should be done in the month of May. And that is, um, so I began building backward from the end date in preparation. Um, but to your point, Mrs. Hanos, yes. Then after the calendar gets approved, it's very important to work to set a graduation date and put that out as early as possible. Maybe not two years in advance, but again, people like to know in order to plan. Yes, yes.
And there'll always be some people that it's still not early enough for, right? That's, again, uh, not everyone's happy, no matter what.
But there's a difference between like happy about the thing that you know and happiness or unhappiness. But there's a difference between like happy about the thing that you know and happiness or unhappiness because you don't know.
Yeah, I guess I've always felt like it's pretty much the same every year, right? Like the start date, the end date, the.
I don't think that's most.
The longest.
Start and end, like I don't think everybody's like.
Just for fun, I think I'll pull the calendars from every year except COVID crazy year and we'll just see. We probably have, we could probably write three rules. It's probably a very short algorithm that solves how we construct the calendar.
They can do it on the calendar.
Is there, I don't remember why, I think it's just been hard planning for years, but I mean, could we move it even back to January? I mean, does that, I know it's only a month, but could we move this discussion a month prior? I mean.
It's in our board planning calendar to be February. We alter our own board planning calendar. If you think having it in January is.
I know it's only a month, I'm just thinking.
Again, we tend to build and align and the neighbors, if you will, have all had their draft. Here in their February meeting, but we could certainly look in January.
We think you can persuade sixteen other districts to get it done early enough. I guess only five for some decades, just four other districts. To be continued, but now I'm kind of curious, it's probably what I'm going to do when I go home tonight, just look at numbers and calendars. Yeah, sure, yeah, uh, let's see. The general operating budget for CSI U, let's take this.
It's the first look at it for you to review. The reminder is the IU builds their budget based on districts accessing their services. And if we choose to use, then those are the billing amounts that we pay. So you have the summary budget for review. And it becomes a voting item next for.
And if you haven't had a chance, the talking twins document that they sent are specific to Lewisburg district. The voluntary nature, et cetera, so if you didn't look at that, it's just a one sheet.
Good information, thank you.
Our next item is the foreign exchange student program.
All right. I am going to take this one as well. For many, many years, one organization rotary brought us. Students who made arrangements through their organization and host families. In the community and foreign exchange students would spend an academic year with us. What has really transitioned is the awareness that Rotary is not the only sponsoring. Organization for students. There have been two organizations reach out to us. And both names are there for you, cultural exchange and international cultural exchange. Services have both reached out to the district asking to be endorsed. They are fully invented. Organizations received a lot of support materials. To allow us to work with them to bring students here under J one visas. Our own board policy says we should be made aware of that at the board level. And so the reason for the item tonight under information is to make you aware. That we have been approached by two organizations to allow, in the case of each. There is already a host family here in the district wanting to have this experience for. Themselves and their families. So I make you aware and with your understanding, we'll sign those agreement papers. And make this opportunity available. J one visas, if you read our policy, no tuition charge. So I do want you to be sure to have that understanding as well.
This is mostly the. Burden on the district as far as administrative stuff. No.
No, 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 no.
Thank you. For my board president's report tonight, I'm gonna. Provide a few notes on our G D F board meeting from the previous week and some things that they're looking at. So Green Dragon Foundation is our educational foundation that supports a lot of initiatives in the district for all of our guests tonight. And so Vence gave a great presentation on the comprehensive plan, talking about setting the priorities of the district, again, making the public aware that. The Green Driving Foundation raises money for priorities set by the district. That's just a really important feature of our relationship. And so we talked about upcoming initiatives that we may want to secure additional funding for. And also again revisiting those endowments. So it's an ongoing conversation. We're always looking at capital projects. We're always looking at new initiatives in the district. And we want to make sure that we partner with them for anything that they can help with. And actually, I think it probably feeds right into what you were going to say about your presentation was very well received.
Yes, it went very well, thank you.
It's your turn.
I want to mention that then, but I just wanted to also thank and welcome Kaylee for a great first week and a half here with us. I got to see her firsthand and working with the students today. And just her interactions with them were just great, which is awesome to see that firsthand this afternoon, so open and welcome to the team. I want to give you guys a few dates coming up. Shrek the Musical is happening for performances. End of this month and into into March, February twenty seventh, twenty eighth and March first, so try to get your tickets to that to that. They're online on our website, you can purchase those. We have our girls' basketball team is the second seed in districts and they'll be playing on Thursday of next week. Playing my daughter's team Milton, so we'll be on the fence there. And the boys team was going to be probably going to be the fifth seed in an away game on Friday of next week. Wrestling is in sectionals this Saturday, that's going to be at Southern Columbia High School. And our bowling team has their last match, senior night is tomorrow, so for Valentine's Day, if you want to get in a bowling match, it's at three thirty at the American Legion. So it's just days for you, things going on at the district.
Board liaison and committee reports. I don't know if you have any for this, we're off cycle, right? Does anybody have anything new? All right, we're on to the consent agenda. So do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kraus. Second by Ms. Hanos.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Eve?
Yes.
Dr. Jwansby?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Slimes?
Um, yes, with the exception of the board minutes from the last thing, because I wasn't pressed on.
Dr. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Grant?
Yes.
I guess I was, you know what, I wasn't present during the board thing, so I should have stayed in the minutes.
Next we have citizens comments to board on non-agenda items. Do anything come in online? No, anything in the room? Director's comments. I haven't selected you first in a while.
Sure, um, welcome Kaylee. I'm glad you had a good first week or so and enjoy your. Interactions in the classrooms. Thank you for putting in that time to get a sense of the place that really means a lot. Welcome to Mrs. Gemberling as well. Happy to have you here. And I'll just quickly say I'm grateful. Eric, you talked a little bit about the universities coming and bringing students and that's just fantastic and glad to hear that's still happening. And at timely moments, you know, for the kids and for. Know our calendar, so thanks for facilitating that.
I don't think I have anything else to add.
Um, yeah, I just, I want to say welcome. I'm excited for the high school musical and we'll be here meeting during opening night. And just, but sincerely to express a huge appreciation for the theater program throughout this district, not just here at the high school, but the, the middle school as well. Our, our community theater is opening the production of A Wrinkle on time tomorrow night and we have, by my count, at least six iconic students. That are going to be, be in that production, working alongside with adults and I. You know, Mr. Boston and, and Mr. Wilkinson and all teachers and other here to promote theater and so. Are a huge part of inspiring those kids to want to go out and have other experiences in the community of one side, so. Be very proud and very happy, so I just want to shout out, thank you.
Uh, welcome, welcome. You know, the everything, the presentation tonight on the CAPS program is awesome. The other thing I'll say is that although we only maybe get. As last, I looked maybe about eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars. From the federal government, the United States Department of Education. It's a small but important part of what we do here. And I hope, I hope, I hope that it will continue to be. So.
I'm excited for Shrek, it was fantastic and I hope people saw the post that they have their spray makeup, that was exciting.
We saw one of the helpers with that with like the.
I thought the signing day was really awesome at the high school, the pictures of it that came through. It was exciting just to see where some of the people are going. My mom was super excited, somebody started a wingsburg and signed there, nobody goes there. Small college, not bad college. And then also the Valentine's Day breakfast, heard a lot about that, was really excited, had an excited eighth grader that was invited to come down. And apparently her was on pancakes, made amazing pancakes, so. But yeah, that's it, seems like amazing stuff, welcome to the new people.
Yep, um, welcome as well, welcome as well, um. The signing day, yes, so I have had a lot of feedback just kind of out in the public that. I guess I didn't realize that that was the first one we've ever had. I feel a little silly that I missed that we didn't do those before, so probably went so good job on that. And I will give once again a plug that if you are shopping in Giant between now and November, you round up. That money comes back to the district to help with food security issues. Through March. Sorry, thank you for.
I'm going to draw attention, your personnel report that you approved tonight. Does recognize retirements. And Mrs. Christie Amy, art teacher here at the high school, beloved by many. An alumni member of Lewisburg community, a graduate of Lewisburg area high school. Well appreciated and we just wish her the very, very best. Suzanne Gemberling, our library clerical aide here in the high school. Invaluable in terms of service provided and we recognize her retirement tonight as well. Kristen is doing great and she has good training with Mrs. Young. And tonight, Kristen and Kyle, thank you for taking the board secretary role. I appreciate that very much. Thank you for the good dialogue and feedback tonight. Not only in our exec session, but then here in reference to the calendar. I appreciate that, that helps know where to go and guide from your good conversation and feedback. Thank you.
I really don't have anything other than I noticed that neither you or Jordan ate your vegetables.
I kept thinking if I crouch on it, as the camera is just going to be pointed at. Everyone say goodbye, we'll time it next time.
I didn't take any broccoli in the first place, so. Oh gosh, I totally lost my train of thought, you know? Of course, welcome and thank you. I'm just, it's, everyone's got just such a really good positive vibe tonight. I want to thank both Kyle and Vance for answering my, my many emails about small things. And we joke about things I look at that other people don't notice, but yes, like a sewer bill, so thank you for that. And I texted Joe today and I was like, hey, do you want to do a little data project with me? And he's like, yeah. And so between our meetings and all these other things, we just had fun like digging into some stuff and I think that's so nice that. You know, sometimes Kristen and I'll dig into something very quickly. Hey, did you know this was happening? Oh, I didn't know we didn't do that before, as an example, right? Or whatever. So I think it's nice that we have these, these good and responsive relationships where we can, we can figure things out pretty quickly and bring solutions forward. So thank everyone for that. Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. You've been so quiet.
Okay, um, yeah, I wanted first to say I hope everyone's feeling better. I know that there was a lot of illness in January. So knock on wood, the worst has passed. I did want to share, I'm actually not there because I'm in Washington DC. For some education research meetings at the federal level. Interesting time to be here. But I did actually get to meet with our representatives, both Senator Staff and also Glenn Thompson. So I was advocating for our district, especially talking about Title One funds in particular, something I know it's important to us. So yeah, I hope that I can continue to provide feedback and as we navigate the shifting federal education lens.
Ashley, could you hear us crunching? That's what Erin and I really want to know.
People's being eaten whatsoever. For vegetables in the room.
We appreciate that you're advocating for us. Thank you and thank you for taking the time to, to be here virtually. I think that gets us to an adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kraus, second by Dr. Graham, all in favor, say aye.